I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission to Order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy is excused. Commissioner Rotman is going to be late. Commissioner Morell.
Here.
Can I get a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to get an acceptance of the agenda, and there are some changes to the agenda. The first item, Item A under Public Hearings, that item has been, my understanding, it's been pulled, and it's not, we're not doing that to a date certain.
We do have to continue, we have to vote to continue it, though.
So do we vote to continue it now, or do we go later?
I think you can do it now, under acceptance of the agenda, to vote to continue it. Technically, it will be to a date uncertain, because we will be re-noticing that item to account for a technical error in the public hearing notice itself, but that notice has already gone to publication, and it will return to you at the next meeting.
So I would take a motion. Commissioner Miller, would you like to make it?
Motion to continue Item 2A, Mark Temple, for an extension of time for a track map for Casa Verona, to a date uncertain.
Second.
All in favor? We can do a voice vote on this, I think.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The second item is that I would like to move Item 4, under Unfinished Business, up ahead of the hearing on Item C, which is the limited update of the general plan, so that the people who are here for that item can get out an hour or two early. And when we get to the update on the general plan, I think we'll make a determination at that point as to whether or not we're going to finish that item tonight, or we will extend it to the next meeting.
Can I also ask a point of clarification for the members of the public who are here? Item 4, in addition to moving it as a non-public hearing item, we would typically take comment during public comment at the beginning of the agenda. By the determination of the chair and the commission, you may choose to take those comments at the time the item is discussed. But I think for the benefit of knowing how to run public comments, if you might make that decision now.
I would tend to take them at the time that we discuss it, if that's something that the applicant wants to do. They have a choice in this instance.
Perfect, thank you.
With that change, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this point, we are at public comment. The time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and Items of General Interest Within Our Jurisdiction. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearing items can be offered at this time, or people can testify for all items on the agenda, I believe, except Consent Calendar can be offered at this time, or you can choose to offer them at the time that the item is before us. With that, the public comment period is open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
I'm going to check Zoom, Madam Chair. If you are, if you are attending via Zoom, and you would like to speak now, instead of during the item for which you are participating, please raise your hand, and I will allow you to speak. No speakers on Zoom, Madam Chair.
There being no speakers, the public comment period is closed. The next item is the Consent Calendar, and it's the approval of the minutes of July 24th, 2024, and I was not present at that meeting, so I will be recused from that vote.
I would note, just a small typo on page three, under Coyote Dens, Item Number Seven, there's an unfinished sentence. That seems to be a recurring sentence, and it looks like it just dropped off, so just have that altered.
Clean that up, thank you.
But with that, I have no other changes.
Is there a motion?
I move to accept the agenda as, with the except, with the correction listed.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
And Commissioner, Chair Wermick.
Is recused.
Excused.
The motion passes. Okay, moving right along, we have a request by Las Consuelas Villas.
Villas.
Am I pronouncing it incorrectly? For an approval of a conditional use permit to operate a 960-square-foot bar cocktail lounge at 370 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening. As I introduce the project in front of you tonight, it's a conditional use permit application for a proposed bar in downtown. This is the area via the project site. The project site is a .25-acre site, which is located within the Central Business District Zone, Downtown Parking Combining Zone, and the Resort Overlay Zone. The site, as you can see, is fully built today, with the two buildings that were constructed in 1935 and 1944, and one of the buildings where the proposed bar is located is actually a two-story mixed-use building. And as the staff mentioned, the site is fully built out, and for the reason, there is no on-site parking available. The building is, buildings are currently unoccupied, except for the proposed bar space. And this is the frontage of the proposed bar, just to show the site context. As staff mentioned, the property is developed with two buildings, and the proposed bar will be located on the ground level of the mixed-use building, which has been dedicated for commercial uses. And the site immediately adjacent to the bar is an existing restaurant, Las Casoeras Original to the South, and the retail on the north side. So the proposed bar is 960 square feet inside, and as staff mentioned, it's going to be located in the commercial space within the mixed-use building, and the space directly above the bar is the residential unit, which has been leased by the applicant. And this is a proposed floor plan for the bar use. As you can see, the business is proposing to provide the 26 seats. It's all indoor, and there will be no kitchen, and the business is planning on employing five individuals.
Could you show us the exact bar space and where the existing restaurant is with a laser pointer?
The existing restaurant is actually located in a separate parcel.
Ah.
Right. So this floor plan in front of you is the bar space.
Okay.
Yes.
And the hallway separates the existing restaurant?
Correct. This is actually the breezeway that's located between two buildings, and this floor plan does include, however, the restaurant is on a separate parcel at the separate address.
Thank you.
Oh, the top, Kima? Oh, okay. Sure. So, oops, sorry. It's a little c, but it's hard to see, but the building right under this yellow highlighted area, that's the Las Casoeras building. And in conjunction with the serving or alcoholic beverages, the business is proposing to offer food items that are prepared at the adjacent restaurant. And then also, the applicant is proposing indoor live entertainment on a certain days of the week. And the table here shows the proposed hours of operation. The business will be closed on Sundays and Mondays, and the business will operate between 4:00 and 10:00 on Tuesday and Wednesday. And the proposed hours of operation for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is between 4:00 p.m. and midnight, and applicant is proposing to off, to provide live DJ performance between 7:00 and 11:00 p.m. on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. In reviewing this application, staff has identified the following issues. The first one is that the site does not have any on-site parking, whereas the proposed bar use, based on the number of seating, would require nine off-street parking spaces. And then also, there are very few records pertaining to this property, such as permit licenses and land use entitlements, which could give us the background information on this property in terms of land use and off-street parking. And then also, the application is proposing to conduct indoor live entertainment, however, the bar space is directly under the residential unit. And as for the analysis of the off-street parking issues, the staff has determined that the proposed bar use will not intensify the site off-street parking demand, and for the reasons below. The project is not proposing any physical expansion to the building, and the bar space will be fully located within existing space, and this tenant space was previously occupied by similar service-oriented businesses, and the buildings are currently unoccupied, except for the bar space, and the street parking is available on both sides of North Palm Canyon Drive, and public parking lots available within the site vicinity. And then also, considering the use of, excuse me, considering the nature of the business, the staff anticipates that some of the patrons will be utilizing alternative transportation methods. And for, due to these reasons above, the site off-street parking meets the intent or the requirements of the zoning code, and additional off-street parking is not required for the proposed project. And as for the mixed use, I'm sorry, the indoor live entertainment within a mixed-use building, in the CBD zone where this property is located, the mixed-use buildings are permitted, so that adjacency of commercial and residential use is somewhat anticipated, but in this case, the bar use and the residential use abuts each other, and there might be a potential land use conflicts and concerns. However, such concerns can be mitigated through land use regulations, and such as limiting indoor live entertainment on certain days as proposed by the applicant, and requiring adherence to the city's noise ordinance regulations, and they require windows and doors to be closed during the performance, and require noise monitoring during performance. These are actually included in the recommended conditions of approval, PLN 7. And in recommending this condition, staff took the nature of a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, into consideration. This Conditional Use Permit runs with the land, and the condition was a permit applied to subsequent assignees and owners, so that in case in the future, let's say that the business moves out, this condition will still apply in case the commercial space and the residential unit are these two different parties. And in order for the Planning Commission to approve this Conditional Use Permit, the specific findings that are specified in the zoning code has to be met. In analyzing this project, staff concludes that the proposed bar use may be permitted, subject to a Conditional Use Permit application, so it is consistent with zoning code, and the project is consistent with the intent of the general plan, and the site is appropriate for the proposed use, especially considering the location and the historic pattern of the property in terms of land use. And the recommended conditions of approval are appropriate for the approval of the proposed use, and are necessary to protect, excuse me, to protect the general welfare of the public. And in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution that was included in the staff report, and approve the proposed project, subject to the conditions of approval recommended by staff. And this concludes the staff presentation, and applicant is available if you have any questions, in addition to staff. Thank you.
Questions from the commission?
I have a question, a couple of questions. Was this ever a standalone bar in the past, or was it always associated with the businesses in that building?
So based on the available records, which is a land use permit, this space was historically occupied by restaurants.
Yeah.
But by itself, not a bar. But again, the earliest records that the staff was able to locate goes back to 1998, so there may be a chance that there was something similar to bar before, but I just could not confirm that information.
Yeah, my concern is, I mean, I think it's an appropriate use, but it's, the bar is sort of ancillary to the restaurant next door, and if the restaurant next door was to leave, it would leave a standalone bar that relies on, you know, the adjacency of the restaurant next door, like for trash and food service and things like that, is all coming out of the restaurant, which wouldn't be there if they were separated for whatever reason.
Just to clarify, we are, because for the city's perspective, this is on a separate property and a separate APN, we are treating it for the purposes of approval as a standalone business. So I hear the concern, but the way that we structured the conditions and the way that we've undertaken our review, to look at it independently.
All right.
Operationally, they are tied together, but for our intentions, it stands on its own.
They're standalone. Yeah, well, that's, and, you know, the trash could be a problem if the restaurant left, because the trash, the dumpsters and everything are on the property next door. They're not, they're not on this property.
We can, sorry, we can have the applicant maybe speak a little bit more to how they intend to handle the trash and how it could be handled, if that scenario played out.
Other questions? Oh, I'm, it's not, I'll call you later. Other questions from, I have a couple. So how long has Las Consuelas been in business?
The applicant can confirm that information.
Okay, and just, the noise ordinance comes into play anyway at 11:00, doesn't it? When does, when does the noise ordinance?
Well, the, any activity that takes place in a city is subject to noise ordinance. It's just that the maximum permitted noise level changes throughout the day.
And it changes at 11:00, doesn't it?
It usually goes down by five decimals at 10:00 p.m.
At 10:00 p.m., okay. No other, if there are no other questions of the applicants here, you have 10 minutes. And give your name and...
My name's Alana Coffin. And what else? Can you hear me? Okay, my name's Alana Coffin, and I am the current owner of Las Casoeras Original Villas. My grandparents opened in 1958, so we're, we've been there 66 years. My mother took over after my grandparents, and now I am the current owner, along with my son, who runs it with me, and it's the mom and pops of all the restaurants here, Las Casoeras Restaurants. So we never had a bar in our location, so when the space became available, I wanted to open a bar to have for my customers. We do have a full liquor license at Las Casoeras, and so we're able to obtain that through the ABC to extend over into my bar. There will be no issue with the restaurant leaving before the bar, because I'm the owner of both. So that answers that. I did get notification from the ABC, the supervisor, today, that as soon as I get the approval, hopefully for the CUP, that she will move forward with my expansion license.
Are there any, any questions of the applicant? Go ahead.
Hi, hi, Alana. How do you envision, how had you figured on the food coming over from Las Consuelas over to the bar? Is it going to come through that hallway, or?
No, no, it's going to come through the kitchen, right out the front.
Out the front and into the...
Yeah, I have a patio at the restaurant, and also my parklet, so we're already right there in that area, so it's the same distance.
So it's going to come in the front door of the bar here, then?
Correct.
Okay.
You have to walk down the sidewalk with other people?
But we already do that.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
We do that already, yes. And also, my customers from the restaurant park in my parking lot at the restaurant, and then they just would walk over to the bar, so they could use my parking lot. Also, the trash cans are in my parking lot as well. My dumpsters and trash cans can be in my parking lot.
Who would be living upstairs? Would that be you, or somebody else?
I live there, yeah, for several reasons. So when I have visiting family come in, they can stay there, and also, just so that I have that space, and so no one else has to be bothered by any noise.
Makes sense.
Are you, I was looking at your employees. Are you going to have any security guards there at night when you have the DJs?
So I spoke with Lieutenant Villegos at the police department, and we're putting a security plan together.
Can you speak a little bit into the mic?
We're putting a security plan together with the police department. He said that at this time, I don't need security guards, that that comes in after if there was any issue. It's a really high-end bar. It's very beautiful, and I have very high-end tequilas, and my prices are pretty high, so we have a certain clientele. I don't foresee any bar fights happening. But I do have security cameras in all areas, 360 view, alarm system... But I do have security cameras in all areas, 360 view alarm system, and it's a very small bar, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I can't wait to try it out.
Yay.
I would, if I just might, that requirement for a security plan is a condition of approval in coordination with the PD, so that will be executed based on their requirements. They've already begun those conversations.
Just a quick question. You've been in business since 58?
Correct.
Ever been any police reports out of Los Consuelos? I'm expecting no answer. Okay. Any other questions? Public hearing on this is, or are there any other?
You go open.
Are there any other members of the public here who wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you so much for your time.
When do you plan to open?
As soon as I get approval, yeah.
Like for this season, you'll be open?
Oh, yes, 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 right away.
Thank you. Are there comments before we get a motion? I have one, which I don't see a reason to do the hours of operation here. The noise ordinance kicks in, it really controls it. This is a very well-run operation, it's been with the city forever and we want to keep them as long as we possibly can. They're using the upstairs rental space and it's not being used residentially. So I would like to see this go through with the staff recommendations, but eliminating the hours of operation requirement. And I'm assuming you don't have a problem with that, Mr. Hadwin?
So, I don't believe that I do, but I just want, as a point of clarification, if we're looking at the conditions of approval, I think that you are referring to planning condition number two, which states hours of operation for the bar. And it says that the CUP would allow the following hours of operation for the bar, Tuesday and Wednesday, four to 10:00 PM, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, four PM to midnight, and Monday and Sunday closed. And you are suggesting, Madam Chair, that that condition of approval be eliminated?
Yes.
Such that the CUP is not what's regulating the business hours? I would also then point out planning condition number seven, which speaks to the hours of indoor live entertainment. That is in here because that was sort of what was indicated by the applicant and it sort of tends to somewhat mirror the noise ordinance. Are you also suggesting that that one be removed and we just rely on the underlying noise ordinance?
I thought we could rely on the underlying noise ordinance as long as it covered, it covered that.
I don't believe I have any condition, any concern with that because I do think that you are correct in that the noise ordinance would govern those activities anyway. So if they were able to operate with the other conditions in place, the closed doors and windows, the noise monitoring equipment, and they were able to stay under the limitations of the noise ordinance, I don't think that we would have a concern. And of course, if there was, we would go through that process with our code enforcement division.
I am okay with that only because there's not any direct nearby residential on the hotel that's about to open, it's far enough away, so I'm okay with that.
Do we have, if someone would like to make a motion, and I just want to.
Sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair, Jim Priest, City Attorney's Office. I just also wanted to point out quickly that under condition ADM nine for grounds for revocation, noncompliance with city codes is also a valid basis as well as actually having it in the condition. So again, if there's noncompliance with the noise ordinance, there's enforcement capability there as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also wanted to commend staff on the parking decision. I think with a property like this where it's been in operation all these years without a parking requirement and there is ample parking, I don't, I think it was right not to impose a new requirement on a property that's been operating for 90 year, 80, 80, I'd say 70 some years, 60 some years. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to accept the CUP for Elena Barantapis to operate a 960 square foot bar cocktail lounge at 370 North Palm Canyon Drive.
A second.
Can you call the role, please?
Sorry, as a point of clarification, Commissioner Baker, does your motion include the chair's recommendations to eliminate conditions PLN two and seven?
Yes, I stand corrected, thank you.
And does your second include that?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
We look forward to visiting you there.
Kathy's going to take the whole commission.
Absolutely. Okay, we're going to item four, the request by Lockland LLC owner Architectural Glazing for a major development permit application to construct a 6,780 square foot warehouse building located at 19345 New Hall Street. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Let's wait till we get the correct slides up. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an application by Lockland LLC for their corporate, new corporate warehouse building out in the north end of town, north of I-10 in the McLean tract that we, is commonly known as. So up in this area of town, there are multiple warehouses that have some cannabis grows and also other manufacturing facilities. The aerial site that's before you today shows the vacant lot in the red square. I'd like to point out to the south of it, there is a driveway that leads from New Hall Street through the property and this is the access point for, shared access point for both the north and the north lot, which is the subject lot, and then the existing warehouse building to the south. So the proposal is to, is a vacant lot of 15,000 square feet, they're proposing to construct a 6,780 square foot warehouse with a lower level, including a warehouse for the Architectural Glazing Company, a showroom for patrons to come in and view the items that are for sale, and then a staff lounge. And then there's an upper level or a mezzanine level that will be the company office space, which includes five offices and some restrooms. So the parking requirement for warehouse and offices is provided, it's nine spaces, there are four extra spaces, which, total of four spaces, so they comply with the parking requirements. In looking at the site plan, as I mentioned, there is a common shared access point driveway along the south of the lot. The parking is located adjacent to the street, it's built to city standards and the proposed 6,000 square foot warehouse will be to the rear of the building. So access, once you come in off of New Hall Street, you'll drive west and then into the double driveway and park with correct ADA spaces. Both patrons and staff will park in this 13-space parking lot. I also like to point out that there is an internal trash enclosure, which is located here, that will be accessed from the shared driveway. And when the dumpsters need to be emptied, they'll be pushed out and then emptied and then pushed back in. And we'll see that here on the floor plan. So as I mentioned, there's a large warehouse, showroom lounge, and the upper mezzanine floor has multiple offices and restrooms themselves. The building itself is 28 feet tall, it's a unique design. This is the east-facing or the elevation that would face New Hall Street. The building materials include stucco and a white color and then a darker metal element that is sort of a cube element. And if the planning commission wishes the architect is here and can describe it better than I can, there is an overhang that will provide shade for the lower level. And then there are other accent elements, which include, we pointed out, there are some stack stone gray, gray color which wraps around the building. So there are building elevations here that show the different elements with the eyebrows over the windows to provide solar control. This is the side that faces the shared driveway. There's one roll-up door that will provide access into the warehouse. And as I mentioned, the trash enclosures are fully enclosed here. Moving on, this is another angle of the west side. This elevation is the west side, so this is the side that would be closest or take the most of the wind. As you know, this is a very windy area part of town, so there are few penetrations in the building as they, it is windy. And this is the, this elevation is the one that faces north and west and that also has one opening with a roll-up door that accesses out to a small surplus supply yard. Let me go back one. The lot will also be enclosed by an eight-foot masonry wall, which you can see in this drawing. The landscape plan is proposed, as I mentioned, it's, could be a little inhospitable in that section of town, so the planting that's provided is, will hopefully last and be hardy enough. We have asked that the applicant make sure that the box sizes for the trees are 36 inches so that they have a better chance of living and surviving. The applicant will need to provide a median or a small four-and-a-half-foot tall wall along the frontage with the street. That is a requirement of the zoning code to screen the parking, that will need to be added. The project will go to the Architectural Review Committee and they will look at the details of this landscape plan. Here is a site photo showing the vacant lot and the shared driveway, which is to the left-hand side of this photograph. The New Hall Street is fully improved, there are no sidewalks there, but there are gutter and curb. So the staff recommends approval subject to conditions. There are findings, as the planning commission needs to make, that the staff believes the planning commission can. It is a byright use in the M2 zone, there are similar adjacent warehouses nearby, the building height amassing is consistent with other warehouses in the area, onsite vehicle and pedestrian circulation is protected, public infrastructure is present, and there's no environmental impact to the site as this is an infill category exemption. So Chair, that concludes my report and the applicant is here.
Are there any questions of staff?
My question probably be better for the applicant.
The question I have is, are there any, what's, what is the anticipated use and is there a shower and is there any bike rack planned?
Let's look at the, the applicant can answer that question for sure, but looking at the floor plans, I don't see a shower noted. And as far as bike racks, that's definitely something that we can add to the project.
Any other questions? If the applicant is here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Gabriel Lujan, GLA Design Group. I'm here to answer any and all questions that you may have on the architectural design of the building. I can start with the bike racks. At this point, we don't have any, but we can easily incorporate a bike rack outside anywhere along the landscape area.
And is there a shower?
There's no shower, they use, they use my client, which is here too, he's a, he's a glazing subcontractor.
Ah.
So basically, he's going to do high-end custom glazing for high-end homes, but glazing, so there is no need for a shower.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Well, I like the build, I like the design of the building, I think it looks good relative to the buildings around it. And I had a question on the pink color. Number one, you don't see a lot of black buildings in Palm Springs, so I was curious how you came to pick that. I have no objection to it. And it also looks like the paint is somewhat reflective in your, in the renderings.
Yes, well, right now, we're talking to the, to the metal siding contractor to see if we're going to go with a reflecting paint or we're going to go with a, with a, with a non-reflective paint. And so we're going to take a look at the, at the, at the sun, the fading. But as far as we know, everything is pointing out that this building is going to be unique, first of all, it's very good-looking. We've incorporated stucco, stack stone, two different colors on the stucco, we got the gray, we got the white, and then we got the dark, the dark color on the metal siding. I've also turned the metal siding horizontal, so it doesn't look like a metal building. It's gonna, it's horizontal, so it gives it another architectural flavor. And we believe that the dark color is gonna, is gonna, is gonna make it, make it just fine. Because that's the color we're doing right now. If you look at some of the buildings in Palm Desert, we're going back and painting that ugly orange tile into, with black, and it's not fading at all, it's looking really good. It looks, it looks kind of like a burnt black. And that's what you're going to start seeing more and more in some of these older buildings. We're going to come in and paint the tile black.
Black.
So you'll start seeing the black more and more. And I'm talking the building in Palm Desert right next to Olive Garden. If you saw, we did that, we, we came in with colored samples to the City of Palm Desert Planning Department Architectural Review Committee and they loved it. And now I'm seeing more and more people coming in and painting the old tile roofs black. As a matter of fact, I believe the Porsche building off of, off of 111 in Rancho Mirage also, it's also been, that color is being incorporated more and more.
And it doesn't have an effect on the heat gain?
It does, the heat gain, no, because the building, what we're going to do for, as far as the building, we're going to go in with a, with a spray-on foam insulation on the inside to, to, to battle the heat gain. And we're hoping the reflect, it will, will reflect the heat away from the building.
If I could just interject for one second to let the record show that Commissioner Rotman has arrived at 6:11 PM. Thank you, hello.
But we truly believe it's going to be a very nice building. Cost-effective, we're, we're working with cost.
Commissioner Rotman, can, you're sort of in a, I'm assuming you've read the packet, so do you have any questions for this applicant?
And if anybody has any other comments or compliments, we'll gladly take them too.
The question on loading, so I'm not, I'm not clear on what glazing is or how large the product is there. I'm thinking warehouse or trucks coming up to slide up to?
Yes, we're going to have trucks coming in. As a matter of fact, that elevation shows you where the trucks will be backing in. Loading the inside, where it's designed for the forklift to come in, load them, is tall enough, I have it at 27 feet inside dimension, so forklift will load the, load the trucks. Once they're loaded, they'll be coming in and out of the building. So all loading, all, everything is going to happen inside of the building, inside of the warehouse. So I designed it without that in mind.
So that won't block the access?
Not at all, not at all, yeah. And as a matter of fact, the other metal roll-up door, which is behind the eight-foot high block, well, that's where our forklift is going to be coming in and out to, to move and move stuff from that backyard.
Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Do you have any members of the public?
I'm just checking now, if you are on Zoom and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. And I've just received clarification, they're here for a different item, so no.
If there being no members of the public who wish to speak, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
I just want to thank you guys for an amazing job that you guys are doing and also planning. Glenn, thank you very much. David Newell, thank you very much for all the hard work. These guys are amazing and I just want to thank them and commend them because I know it's not easy, but they do an amazing job. Thank you very much.
We know how good they are. Okay, the matter is before us, I'm going to say one, two words on it. I think it's an absolutely excellent application. The design items on it, although they're excellent, they're, I think, very attractive, will also go before the Architectural Review Committee. I would like to see a bike rack be included in this, we've generally done that with new development in this area. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? Or any, any other comments?
I'll move approval of the major development permit to construct a 6,700 I'll move approval of the major development permit to construct a 6,780 square-foot warehouse at 19345 New Hall Street, subject to the conditions and subject to the additional condition of a bike rack being provided.
Second?
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
The item is approved. Thank you. Okay, the next item in front of us is a public hearing item. The City of Palm Springs for a limited update to the general plan, including revisions to the land use element, circulation element, safety element, and administration section. Before we get a staff report, I just wanted to say that, and I would've done this on the opening of the meeting, except that he wasn't here. Mr., this will be Mr. Newell's last meeting with us. David's taken a position as the director of, is it Director of Development at one of the neighboring cities. We, we're thrilled for you. We're very sorry to lose you. But if we're going to lose you, seeing you move on to a significant promotion and new challenges, the way we think that should happen, and we want to thank you for all of the years and the great service that you've given this commission and the city.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's, it's been a journey, 19 years. So, yeah, it's kind of bittersweet, but thank you. And it's been lots of fun, lots of work, but proud of all the work that we've done as a team, and all the work that you've done as a commission together to, to improve the community here. So, excited for the next sets of things that you're gonna be doing, and the work that's ahead, but I'll be busy, so. I will be checking in though, here periodically, just to see what's going on, so. But the reason I'm here to present tonight is the general plan update, the limited update that we established, or that we started several years ago. This is kind of a culmination of a long process, but I'll try and give you kind of the highlight version of, of all of it in my presentation tonight, starting with an overview of what the project is, going into some, some kind of high-level depth of the element changes, the chapters that we're updating, and then talk briefly about the environmental review process for the project, and then our recommendation for you tonight. So starting with the overview, why are we doing this update? It began in 2019. As a limited update, it was limited for a few reasons. It was, it was limited because there was a limited budget at the time, and we were required to do some updates under state law relative to requirements for the housing element, as well as the safety element. But we also had some, some things that occurred prior to us starting the process, which one of those was the Plan Development District Task Force, that made several recommendations to re-haul the Plan Development District ordinance. They made several recommendations. Part of those recommendations was to update the general plan and some of the policies that we had in that document, or in this document, on the PDD process. So, we've made some changes as a part of this update to address that. We also wanted to incorporate trends that, that we've see, that we see in the planning field since we did the update in 2007, given the time that's passed, and all of the trends that we've seen relative to the planning world and climate action planning, and, you know, resiliency and complete streets, among, among others. There's also been several legislative changes that have happened since 2007 that we wanted to incorporate. So there's been state laws that have been enacted that require, that required us to make some changes to our, to our plans. We wanted to revisit our vision and priorities in the document, because, you know, some time had passed, and we wanted to make sure that those were reflective of the community today. So we went through quite a, a process to update our vision and priority statements that are part of the administrative section of the document. We updated all of the goals, policies to reflect specific changes in the land use, circulation, safety, and housing elements. As you recall, we did adopt the, approved, adopt and approve the housing element last year, and we have since received certification from the state on the housing element. And so really, the, the last piece of this process is to update the final three elements, the land use, circulation, and safety element. And then lastly, we wanted to prepare the updated implementation actions, pull those out of the general plan, so that they are easier to administer and modify. And we made that clarification in the admin section of the, the draft before you. So as I mentioned, this has been a long process. We started this back at the end of 2019. We went through a robust public outreach program for a couple of years, and got feedback on our vision and priority statements. We brought those forward to the planning commission, as well as city council. We were directed to do more outreach, so we did additional outreach on the vision and priority statements, and then those were ultimately accepted in 2022. We, as, as well, we're working on the land use plan and the housing element. Because the housing element does have statutory deadlines, we were trying to move that further along than the rest of the, the process. It was kind of a parallel process that we were working on the update with the housing element being priority, and the remainder of the updates occurring kind of simultaneously, but more in the background, while we tried to prioritize the housing element, to comply with state law. And then we've been more specifically looking at the goals and policy updates during the last couple of years, and bringing all of this through our steering committee, which I'll discuss in just a minute. And so that leads us to today, and the public hearing and adoption process in the fall of this year. So as I mentioned, that we did have a robust public engagement program. One of the pieces of that was the General Plan Steering Committee, which was an ad hoc committee that consisted of nine community residents and representatives, including residents from each of the five council districts, the planning commission chair, a sustainability commissioner, a representative from 1PS, and the planning director from the tribe. The committee met on eight different occasions, as you see here, during the past four years, and they have reviewed various components of the, the update, and made recommendations throughout the process. And they really served as kind of an arm of the community, or the district that they were located in, to, to kind of give us a pulse of what is, is the priority in the community. Additionally, staff conducted targeted outreach at various locations. Staff first conducted roadshows between December of 20 through, through early of, early 2022, to seek input on the draft vision and priority statements. In June of 21, staff also conducted listening sessions at four different locations in the city to gather input on environmental justice and housing issues. There have been several other opportunities for members of the public to participate in the process. There were two community-wide workshops, as you see here on the screen. The first occurred in February of 2020, involving a presentation on the update, workstations for attendees to provide feedback on topics related to housing, land use, and circulation, and computer stations to complete a survey. The second workshop we held was in July of 2021, and that included an overview of the city's approach to addressing the regional housing needs allocation requirement, or the RENA, which is commonly referred to, as well as introducing the land plan. Finally, the city requested community feedback on three different surveys during the update process. The ser, the first survey sought feedback on the vision and priority statements. The second survey was an interactive online exercise, requesting participants map community assets and identify areas for improvement. And the second survey also requested feedback on some emerging themes related to land use, mobility, housing, and, and open space that came out of the first community-wide workshop and prior survey. The third survey was conducted as part of the neighborhood listening sessions, to understand participants, participants' thoughts on housing, parks, pub, public facilities, healthy food, medical care, and transit. The responses to these surveys informed the proposed goals, policies, and programs that were included in the updated elements. So next, we'll kind of dive into some of the changes that are proposed in the elements, and we'll start with the administration section, or that admin element. And so in this element, it's really the, kind of the, the section of the document that introduces the general plan. It identifies the overarching vision and priority statements, and provides background. This section was updated to reflect the new vision and priority statements that were approved by the city council in April of 2022. New information was added to describe the 2040 general plan process, including groups and methods used to shape the plan. We updated the PDD description to reflect changes that occurred to the PD regulations in 2019. This section was also, this session was also, we also described the new approach to the implementation actions, with the actions being separate from the elements. And finally, we updated to, we updated the document to reflect current conditions, such as the removal of text and graphics describing redevelopment areas, which are no longer applicable. We also removed the reference to the potential sphere of influence. In terms of the land use element, we modified the descriptions or requirements for a plan development district. That was some, that was incorporated in some of the land use element in various locations. That was brought to the planning commission previously as well, as well as the city council, as a part of the land use plan and land use description changes. We wanted to reflect in our goals and policies the updated vision and priorities, so we made some changes relative to those directives. The goals, policies, and actions have been modified to address public engagement activities and reflect comments that we received from the General Plan Steering Committee. We wanted to incorporate the amendments that had not been added since the update, or since the original general plan was approved. And so tho, that, those texts had been updated and included in the draft before you. We wanted to revise the land use plan for consistency with the housing element. So we are making a change to some, a portion of, of, well, some parcels southeast of North Palm Canyon and via Esquila, to reflect the, the RENA requirements. The land use definitions were revised. As I said, those were previously brought forward to the planning commission and council in the past. So those are the same as those that were previously reviewed and accepted. The one change, I will say, that we did do was relative to incentivizing the development of affordable housing. The previous presentation of that incentive back in '22 was a threshold of 50% increase in density, or a 50 minimum unit count to get the additional incentive for greater density. Because that was a higher percentage, and we didn't think that ultimately that would be a realistic, realistically achievable in practice, we did modify that one incentive to reduce it from 50% to 20%, in order to qualify for additional density bonus in the mixed-use and central business district designations, and that's relative to additional housing. We updated, or we made updates that are, were required by state law, reflecting current conditions and best practices. We removed hotel intensity standards from the document, and identified hotel uses are permitted in various designations. And then, as I, as I mentioned, in kind of the description of the administrative section, or administration section, we removed the implementation actions from the document, and placed them as a separate implementation matrix for easier administrative tracking and modification. And then, of course, as you probably may recall, when we reviewed the mixed-use classifications, we updated the desired mix of uses to reflect current conditions in those areas, and the preferred outcomes of future uses. So this is the view of the proposed land use plan, the descriptions of, or the designation shown on the left, and then a kind of a zoomed-in version of it on the, the right. Terms of the circulation element, this was more of a refresh, rather than a full-blown overhaul, or...
Just a, a quick question. When we go through these, are we gonna go back through the documents one by one? I'm anticipating that we will, for questions and comments and...
Yeah, you can, I mean, you certainly, but we can return back to each one if there's specific questions or comments on each one.
Or do you prefer to take them after each document?
I'm happy to do whatever the commission pleaser. So, if you'd rather talk about the land use element now, since I've kind of gone over that overview, we, we can certainly discuss that first, and then we can move into circulation, if the commission would like to do so.
I think that, I think it would be better to do it that way. Are there issues and concerns with the land use element? Does anybody have, in, in the implementation actions?
I actually have a question on the actual land use plan. Could you pull that land use plan back up again? And when I zoom in on the site, it's just to the east of, of Farrell, north of Alejo. We did a project with eight single-family units there, and I believe it included a land use amendment, a general plan amendment, to change it from industrial to residential, to allow for the eight units to be there. They recently came back a few months ago for an extension of time. And I'm looking at what I think is the site, and it still shows as industrial on the map, on the land use plan, rather. If you know the site, it's obviously just to the west of the airport, north of Alejo. There's a purple extension that comes down, and on the right side of it is commercial, where the UPS facility is. And it's still showing as industrial purple, and I think it should be residential.
Yeah, that's, that's a good catch. That is one that we would have to correct, to update, to reflect that change.
I, I noted that the similar change was done down at Sunrise, north of Sunny Dunes, where we did a land use plan amendment to support single-family homes along Sunrise in that location, and that is reflected on this general plan map. But that other one wasn't.
Yeah, we'll make that correction.
That's all I had on the map itself.
While we're looking at the land use plan, I do, I do wanna say that there are three public comment letters that were not included in your packet. Two of those request changes to land use designations. One of them is the Bel Air Green site off of El Cielo. When that was brought to, was that, that request had previously been brought forward as a part of the prior land use plan review with planning commission and council. And at that time, it was determined not to change the designation from the open space to a residential designation. But I did wanna make that, I did wanna make that, the commission aware of that, so if that is something you wish to take on, that is something that has been submitted. The other request that we received, that I gave you here at the dais, was the request from the Methodist Church, who is seeking to increase the, the property, the rear portion of the property from medium-density residential to high-density residential.
Just speaking on those, the, the first one, I, I think that's more than we can Just speaking on those, the, the first one, I think that’s more than we can take on here in terms of Bel Air Greens. It, I think there may be some of it with the road and the circulation plan, which we could, we could deal with. I’m not sure what your attitude toward the high-density residential change is.
Yeah, so I...
It seems to me that we need to understand that better before we approve it.
So I might give a little context to that. I, we take your direction on the Bel Air Greens conversation. I think that David pointing out that that conversation had occurred in the last round of review is important and valid, and I think the direction we received at the time was, was to leave it be. I would also point out that on the Bel Air Green property, of course, they’re going through a process through the golf course conversion ordinance to look at changing, developing that property, and that would include a general plan amendment through that process if it’s not done through this process. And that may have played into the determination that was made previously to let it go through that process rather than this process. On the Methodist Church, that is a request that we have looked at, and staff would support that change if the commission and council also wished to make it. They are looking and working in coordination with the city. They had released an RFP earlier in the year, and they’re going through a process to actually realize some affordable housing on that site. And that change would allow them to pencil that housing out in a way that makes more sense and that the city would be supportive of, and there have been conversations internally here that would support that. So we would support that change if you so wished or wanted to recommend that the council consider it further.
And just to confirm, that site is just west of Sunrise and south of Alejo, is that right?
That’s correct.
I’m not sure, the concerns of other members of the commission, I know I would probably be supportive of this change.
I worked with the church to develop this plan for the last several years, and they’re trying to copy what DAP did to provide affordable housing on unused portion of their parking parcel. The only question that I have is, it is in the movie colony, and I anticipate some pushback from the neighbors similar to what we received for the project that’s on Stevens and 111.
So I would say by changing the designation, you know, there’s still quite a process to go through, as you would remember from DAP. We would also need to reflect that change in the zoning at some point, whether we change the zoning now or through the comprehensive zoning update that is underway. And then they would have to go through the normal entitlement process. So I would say regardless of what decision you make, if you were to make it, there would be the standard entitlement process and opportunity for the community to weigh in at that time.
And I’m not sure if this is the point in time where we discuss this. But do, can I just ask the other members of the commission their attitude?
I would, I would, I would recommend that the commission ask general questions first before we open the hearing and make a recommendation on that.
Okay, so, but we’ll do it in context of the land use element. I had a couple of other ones on page 49. It refers to Palm Hills, and I’m wondering if, grab that. It’s IMLU 114.1, and it’s a requirement of a specific plan for any proposed development in Palm Hills. Am I correct that Palm Hills is the area that was purchased by Oswett Land Trust and two other land trusts, and it’s no long, it’s open, it’s, will be permanent open space? Am I correct in that?
That may be the case, yes. I believe it has been purchased by Oswett.
So is there, this, it looks to me like this might be something that needs to be changed.
Can you, I don’t know that my page numbers are matching up. On the bottom of it, can you see what the page...
It’s page 49. And it’s the top item in page 49.
Bear with me one second, Madam Chair.
And, and I don’t know if that land is now designated open space. I don’t, it’s, is that land now designated open space? Because it probably should be on the map as well.
I think, I’m not entirely certain the extent of property purchased by Oswett. I know they made a purchase up in that area, and there may be some parcels that potentially they do not own and could have development rights.
It’s, it just should be clarified. I think they purchased 9,000, 7,000 acres?
I think that this would only get triggered should any portion of that property seek to be developed. I don’t imagine Oswett is seeking to develop, right? So this would, I, I think if we were to leave it in, it would only be applicable if there were any portions of that area that were not under Oswett’s control. And I think to ensure that we capture that, I would recommend we leave it in.
And can you confirm the status of the property before it goes to City Council?
Sure, yeah.
As to whether it’s open space now or not? I think there were three conservation organizations that participated in the purchase. The other is just a question. On the same page, IMLU 4.1, which refers to the Density Transfer Program. That program has never been well-spelled out. It didn’t work well on Serena Park. I’m just wondering, we’re referring to a program that’s not, the contours of which are not...
Sorry, can you repeat which section you’re referring to now?
It’s page 49.
Yep.
The last two items, it’s the Density Transfer Program. And it, the only place that I’ve seen it used was on Serena Park. And it wasn’t, there isn’t a hard or fast program? I’m just wondering, we refer to it, but we don’t, I don’t think we have. We have maybe an idea?
Yeah, so I think it’s, that’s really just getting at the city, I’d have to probably go back to the original LU 1.4 action. But basically, that was intended to still keep the density transfer program and policy in the general plan, but at some point, perhaps we explore the opportunity to create a density transfer program by ordinance.
Yeah, my sense is, is I hear you, and that certainly became a big source of contention during the Serena Park project, like you’re saying. What I wouldn’t want to do is preclude us from making an actually workable density transfer program. There are several active conversations happening in the city right now, looking at that.
I’m comfortable leaving, and it’s just there are no action items attached to it.
Operationalize it, yeah. I think we would take direction from you to ensure that we develop a framework, an implementation framework to come up with a workable program.
Are there other comments on this, Commissioner Routman?
Yeah, this is related to Crescendo and Boulders properties. And for those who don’t know, Crescendo is north of Racquet Club and west of Palm Canyon, and Boulders is west of Palm Canyon and between Vistacino and Racquet Club. And they are currently undeveloped by, properties. And, and in your staff report, and unfortunately, I’m having trouble pulling up the, the general plan, but in the staff report, you referred to it that you couldn’t designate them as open space because of a no-net loss in density. So can you explain exactly what that means? Is that a overall for the city or specifically for sites?
Yeah, it’s overall for the city.
Okay.
It’s related to housing laws that basically said the land plan and minimum density that you have, I think it was 2019 or around then, at that time could not be changed unless you were, like, for instance, if you were trying to reduce density on one site in your city or jurisdiction, you would have to increase density elsewhere in the city so that, that there’s no net loss, as they call it.
So I did notice that there’s a large section of the Little Tuscany neighborhood, which is about 98% built out, which has been down-zoned from very low residential density to estate. All the properties in that area are all 10,000 to 15,000 square feet, and they’re not two units per acre. So I’m wondering whether there’s some trade-off that can be made that would allow us, and perhaps maybe in other parts of the city, that would allow the, to change the designation to an open space for those two properties.
So this conversation has come up in a couple of different ways on Boulders and Crescendo specifically, and as I understand the history, it was discussed with City Council earlier on in this process and determined that we not make the change at this time through that process. I don’t know that the same members who were involved in making that decision at that time are still the same ones on council now. So what I might suggest is that if the commission wishes to make a recommendation, that we explore that further and perhaps return with an amendment to this to make that change when we’ve had time to accurately analyze where we might offset it. We would welcome that direction as well as from the City Council.
Okay.
And maybe cut it that way, because I don’t know that we’re prepared right now at this point in the process to identify exactly where we can make that trade-off and ensure that we comply with the requirements of state law. But we do certainly understand the history of Boulders and Crescendo and the need to look at it further.
There is a lot of public support to leave them open.
Understood.
Just on the same topic before, recognize, Commissioner Morel, we, we have coming up a redesignation of the school, the college-specific plan, which will up, up-densify. Eventually, it will be, it will become dense and create housing. And I think tying that to Boulders and Crescendo in a recommendation would be good, because as that area gets new zoning, it would, it would create the density where we could make the trade under state law to make Boulders and Crescendo open space.
And if I could just build off that a little bit, there’s a couple of things happening. Some are implementation items coming out of the housing element, where we are required, beginning next year, to start looking at upzoning certain sites to produce additional housing capacity, as well as the comprehensive zoning update, where we will be looking to do the same. And I think through those processes, we can also identify additional lands where we can, you know, achieve both arena obligations as well as some of the buffer that were required and some of the housing element requirements that we have. And that would then give us the ability to come back and further refine the general plan and make those align.
If, so could we make that as a recommendation, that as that happens with the other areas where they’re upzoned, that we tie Boulders and Crescendo? So we don’t say that we’re not going to do it, but that we will look at doing it as we make those future changes as a recommendation?
When we get to recommendations, we can talk about that.
And Commissioner Morel, you had?
Yeah, well, I’m new to the general plan, so I had a general recommendation or suggestion for the, for the land use element, which is it’d be helpful with all these areas that we’re talking about, Crescendo and, and the special policy areas. There’s Chena Cone, Palm Hills, Oswett Cone. It’d be helpful if they, there was some reference to a map. And they do show up on maps, but there’s no reference to a particular map or a page. But I had no idea where Boulders and Crescendo was until I, there’s, I think there’s a letter attached at the end of this that actually addressed it, but, but still no maps. And it’d also be helpful to have some kind of glossary on some of the terminology, because laypeople reading this, it could be difficult, not so much the land use, but some of the other sections. It’d be helpful to have a glossary up front or in back. And one thing I noticed in land use is there’s a specific mention of Desert Resort Regional Medical Center, which I don’t know, I, I wouldn’t think you’d want to be that specific, because there may be some successor someday to Desert Regional. So maybe something more generic.
Yeah, I think, I think it’s a good, those are all good points, and we can find out a way to denote some of the areas that sort of are local knowledge. I, I’ve only recently learned where some of those areas are myself, Commissioner Morel, so I appreciate the call-out, and we’ll take a look at those items.
And then, just generally, I was curious how, like, how public utilities gets handled and other community resources like schools. When we’re talking a 50% increase in population, it seems like it’s going to trigger a lot of other uses that aren’t really addressed in the general plan, infrastructure-type uses. And how, how does that get addressed, or does that get addressed somewhere else? I mean, does Caluison worry about that, or...
Yeah, and so we, we, we talk about some of that in the circulation element. The circulation element does talk about public infrastructure and utilities. So that is, that is addressed at a high level in that document. But yes, anytime there is a, a large-scale development or anytime there is a project that comes before the city, we typically will send Wolf Service letters to the different agencies and ensure that they are able to handle the capacity from those developments. So...
Right.
Any other comments on the land use element? Do you have, do you have a list of the items that we were concerned about for referral? And...
And I think at, at some point, if, if we’re going to start compiling a list of recommendations, we’ll want to hold the hearing first.
Ah, okay.
I have been keeping notes on some of the comments that you have been providing that may be helpful when you get to that point.
We were obviously not finished with the staff report. Are there members of the public who are going to be here who wish to speak? There is one...
I believe there is, yes.
And can at this, at this point, are you speaking on the land use element?
I, I think we, I think procedurally, we do need to...
Go through everything?
Right. I don’t know that we can kind of close and reopen, so I think, it’s up to you if you want to maybe get through the next few elements, since they may be, it’s up to you how you want to handle this. But I think we need to get through the full presentation before you open the public hearing.
Okay.
So if we can have the presentation back up, please? Okay, so getting back to the circulation element update that is proposed, as I mentioned, this is more of a refresh than a full-blown rewrite of the document. We have made adjustments to the circulation map, showing the network of streets in the city. So that figure has been updated, as you know, since 2007. There have been a lot of different road diets or lane reconfigurations throughout the city. So we’ve brought the circulation map so that it is current with current kind of configurations of roads and showing that Palm Canyon is a one-way road that’s three lanes, making it more kind of specific to current conditions and potential future conditions. So based on the land plan, the network is able to still handle the capacity that is expected, should we get to full build-out and the assumptions that were made in the land plan. So that has been updated, as I mentioned, to reflect some of those changes. The bikes and trails map has been also updated to show the CV link has been, has been incorporated into that plan. It also is reflective of the active transportation plan, that’s a CVAG document. We’ve also added some new programs and plans in the, the document, giving more details and modernized cross-sections for the different road, road configurations. So that exhibit has also been updated. We’ve also clarified that vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, and level of service, or LOS, are... and level of service, or LOS, are both important policies that the city wishes to evaluate for projects and make sure that we're not only compliant with state law, but we also locally would like to ensure that there is a smooth flow of traffic with LOS. And then, the goals and policies have been also updated and refined. Emphasis on complete streets is what we heard. Availability of active transportation and transit were comments that we heard during the outreach and engagement process, as well as safety, not only having availability of transit, but also making sure that the streets were safe. So again, lastly, we made some changes relative to the actions, pulling those out from the document, creating the implementation matrix that is attached to the circulation element, and made some refinements with the policies that may have either been more implementation actions in nature or removed if they were duplicative. So this is the circulation plan that I mentioned. That's in the circulation element that has been updated and refined. And this is the bikeways and trails exhibit, also that has been updated and refined. And unless the commission wants to stop and pause and talk about the circulation element with questions, I'm happy to take those now. Or if we'd rather continue on and finish the presentation, we can jump back into it.
You have, what, two more elements?
Just the safety element is really the last.
Safety and then the EIR?
Yeah, safety element, down to my last three slides.
Why don't you go on to the safety element, and we'll come back. We'll do the public hearing and then go back to circulation for comments.
Okay, let's get the slide here. Okay, as far as the safety element, this is one of the documents that has to be updated under state law. It's mandated that it be updated every eight years. It is very technical in nature, and it does go through several requirements under state law that we have to evaluate and consider. So one of those is the vulnerability assessment that was prepared to look at what vulnerabilities there are in the city relative to the various populations in the city. It looks at the threats to residents' structures, and it considers what impacts or things the city should be considering when it comes to safety. So that was first conducted with our consultant, and they prepared that. We got feedback from the Sustainability Commission on that document before it was finalized. And then, from there, the city drafted the, or, I'm sorry, our consultant and the city drafted the safety element, making sure it complied with new standards and policies as it relates to state laws that have changed since the last safety element was prepared. We have integrated it into the document, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, Emergency Operations Plan, other recent planning efforts to address threats and issues relative to safety in the city. There's been sections that have been added on climate change, resiliency, and multiple natural hazards. So in the event that there is, let's say, a wildfire and an earthquake, or an earthquake that may result in large fires in the city, we have to talk or document what potential multiple hazards, natural hazards, there might be. So that's now incorporated into the document. And as I said, it's a very technical document, so it does require, under state law, review by the California Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. They actually reviewed it on two occasions, because we got the document drafted a year ago, and they reviewed it a year ago. There was apparently another state law that had changed, and they had to review it again. So they reviewed it again, and that was on August 20th, when they accepted the document. So similar to what we saw with the housing element, where a state board reviews the document, looks at it for the technical requirements in state law, complying with urban or wildland, urban fire zone areas, looking at how the city addresses those and how our programs will look to mitigate those hazards in our city. They go through all of that, they check a lot of boxes off, and they make sure it meets the state's criteria. So it is very technical in nature, and so the state does approve it. And we think it is reflective of the current issues that we see here in Palm Springs. And they were actually very complimentary of the document when they reviewed it. So that's the safety element.
Any questions?
Yeah, on the safety element, there's some maps in there, or exhibits, that didn't come through on my PDF. It's more out of curiosity, I wanted to see them, but...
Do you have an example of a page, just so I can see?
Yeah. Page, where is it, 6-17? It's the figure 6-2, regional fault lines. That didn't come through. Actually, none of the exhibits in the safety plan came through. The liquefaction potential one didn't come through. Did you guys get it?
I could see it.
I don't know why it didn't download on mine. I could talk to IT.
You're not alone in having some of these issues, Commissioner Morel. So we're working through that, and we will add you to our list. And I'm sorry about that.
I was actually here over the weekend, getting a PDF update, but it still didn't come through.
Sorry about that.
No, it's no big deal. It's good that you have a help desk that works on weekends. The other thing on safety element, is there any... It doesn't really address how they actually handle an emergency. If there was an earthquake or a fire or something, there's nothing... You know, it identifies the disasters, but it doesn't really go into how disasters are mitigated and if there's any redundancy in the system, and things like that.
So if my, if our team behind me will forgive me, I should have introduced Jonathan Netler. He is with Placeworks sooner, but he is here if we have questions on some of the specifics as well. We also have on our Zoom chat some of the team from Placeworks that has helped us prepare the documents. So perhaps either Jonathan or Jaclyn might be able to respond to this.
And I can, hi. Good evening to all the commissioners. Nice to meet you, and nice to see those of you who I've met before. Yeah, at a very high level, the safety element, as means of explanation, the safety element does work hand-in-hand with other documents that the city has prepared to address hazards, namely, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and also the Emergency Operations Plan, which will get down more into that detailed level of procedures to respond to local emergencies. And the safety element provides kind of the overall, as general, hence its location in the general plan, approach to different hazards that are present or may be present in the city. And then, the Emergency Operations Plan and the Local Hazard Mitigations Plan will actually get into that finer-grain level of detail about emergency response and recovery.
I figured it must be somewhere, just not in this document.
That's right.
And the other thing is, and it gets back to land use, but how is it decided when you need a new fire station or a new EMS facility or something like that? If you're talking about large increases in population? Or does that just come up as things get built?
Yeah, and we look at that at a high level. And really, that is something that our fire department does look at. And they're actually doing a study now to determine current fire station locations, response times, other locations that might improve those response times. So this kind of works in coordination with those efforts that they're doing kind of more at the strategic level for them specifically.
I have a question on this, which is, this has already been approved by the state. And so I'm kind of assuming that any changes to it would require you going back to the state for a new approval?
I think that's likely, if there are substantive changes, that they would have to get reviewed again by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, which is, can be an up to 90-day review process.
So one of the things that I'm getting a caution from that, which is really, if we have serious items on it, they should be discussed. But if they're minor, we don't necessarily want to trigger a new review. Would that be?
I think your wisdom is appreciated, Madam Chair.
That would be appreciated.
I would just say, this is a little bit different than how the state review of the housing element proceeds, right? That's a little bit more cyclical, and we go to them, and with preliminary feedback, they come back. And then ultimately, they are the final sign-off after the decision of the city. This almost works in reverse. So that's why we are in this position. And I think it does relate to the highly technical nature of this document and how it is dictated by so many other rules and regulations.
It doesn't sound like it's punitive in the way that the housing element discussion was. Okay, so is there substantive discussion in this document?
Yeah, well, this, I mean, this may be moot, given that it's already been approved. But there was some issues about the designation for racket club west of North Palm Canyon. It's currently listed as a collector street. And I know some property owners along that street had to give the city like 10 feet of their property. Based on the general plan, you've got all estate or low-density residential. And when you look at the definitions of a local street, it certainly falls within that. And I know the city engineering department is working on some configurations to slow traffic down. Part of the issue is that the street is too wide, and it's got a steep slope. And if we're able to narrow that down to a local street, it may help reduce some of the speeding that goes on.
That's a circulation element.
I'm sorry, I can't...
That's a circulation element con...
That's part of the circulation element.
Yeah, it's not, so we're going to go back to the circulation...
I'm sorry, I should have clarified that.
Yeah, we're going to go back to the circulation element after we open the public hearing.
And to clarify, that has not yet been approved by the state, so we can come back to that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, so just on the safety element, does anybody have a major issue that they think we will bring up later on this element? Seeing none. We will open the public hearing. Do we have anything else?
Two more slides, and then I can open the hearing. Okay, so the last two slides I have first is just the environmental review. The city prepared an environmental impact report back in 2007 with the comprehensive update to the general plan at that time. The changes in the land use element from 2007 compared to what we're seeing or proposing today do not change substantially. There have been some minor changes to the land plan. But overall, the ultimate build-out of the city remains very similar to what was previously considered under the EIR. Because of that, the proposed update would not result in any new significant environmental impacts or substantial increase in the severity of a previously identified significant impact. Based on that, the city prepared an addendum to the EIR to document that conclusion. That's part of your backup materials to your staff report. And under the California Environmental Quality Act, no further environmental review would be required. So based on that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission open the hearing tonight, receive public testimony, and, thank you, and adopt the resolution that's included with your staff report. And that resolution is to recommend City Council approve the addendum to the previously certified EIR and adopt the 2040 general plan with amendments to the Administration section, land use element, circulation element, and safety element. That's my presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners.
And then, just one question before we do that. There was, I think, some pages dropped off by Mr. Rocker, who mentioned he sent in comments. And are those in front of any of us?
Those are, yes, those public hearing comments are those public comments you may consider as a part of your deliberations.
No, but they were paper comments. Do we have them?
They were distributed electronically last night? Oh, we received them today, they were sent?
No, that, no.
All right, we'll let Anita answer.
Rocker's comments were received, I think, a couple of days ago, and they are in the meeting folder. What was on your chair today was a letter that was hand-delivered today.
Right, and since I, does anybody else have the meeting folder? I know I don't.
Yeah.
It's on the iPads.
Which I don't have and don't use.
Yeah, I think it just came in like the 9th or something.
So it's, we're going to have to consider those as well. So if you have, if anybody, I don't have an iPad with me. If somebody has paper that I can read when we have time, but we're going to have to consider those. And we'll take a break. I'm going to open the public hearing, and then I'm going to take a five-minute break when I close the public hearing. So at this point, the public hearing is open. If there are any members of the public which should address the commission. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Marvin Ruse, very retired. The last vestige of my tendency here was we picked that photograph out in about 1988. And I've kept asking, can we update it? Because there's a lot of that, you know, marijuana and all kinds of stuff. Anyway, I don't, three minutes is not quite enough. But I would request, I was going to request a three-month continuance. But it sounds like you need at least a two-week continuance. And there's a lot of little details. I think the staff's done a great job with this. I think it's very good, it's very progressive. I'm looking forward to, you know, the revised zoning and how that's all going to come together. And the safety element, by the way, I was going to suggest one thing, which was, one of the major issues in wooded areas in particular are overhead utilities. And we still have some overhead utilities. I think it'd be a good policy to perhaps add undergrounding the last of those utilities. I know Section 11, the Mirror Movie Colony, has some, Vista Chino, East Palm Canyon. And they're not only an aesthetic issue, but I know when Hurricane Hillary came, it was supposed to have 80 mile-an-hour winds. And luckily, those didn't happen. But also, back in, I think it was called the Vista Fire, the whole side of the mountain was on fire. There was a fire department report on the incident that said if the wind changes today, we could lose the city. I mean, it was really one of those gulp moments that we get those wind shears coming down. And part of that potential is obviously overhead utility. So this is one of my suggestions, that the safety element could include that. So I would hope for a little continuance. I talked to Gretchen from Desert Valley Builder Association, and it wasn't on their radar, seemed to come up kind of quick. seemed to come up kind of quick. One of my comments in the packet was on the FAR issue, and hopefully you've seen that. Couple of minor issues in the introduction, that this area was not discovered by the Awa Kaliente Band of Keweeah Indians, which did not exist as that entity. It was the Aboriginal Keweeah and other Keweeah tribes that had this whole area, and the Awa Kaliente was one of them. It also said that the, this was called Palm Springs by the early surveyors. It was actually, Palm Springs was the very first subdivision in Palm Springs. It was actually in San Diego County at the time, and it was the downtown, and the downtown established the grid that, you know, eventually went on through. But a general comment on the policies and the goals seemed like they weren't specific to Palm Springs, they're just kind of a generalized thing. And I talked to David, and he said, well, we kind of brought those forward. But I think some specificity, they talk about, need a hillside ordinance. Well, we've had a hillside ordinance since 1967, but maybe there's some particular tweaks that have been, that come up through the review system that... So if the policies could say that, it would be more like, this is a Palm Springs problem and issue. Still think you should allow a flexible FAR within the zoning structure, but we'll see how that comes out in the zoning structure. One thing very important is that the Airport Land Use Commission needs to review and approve and negotiate all the influential areas around the airport, excuse me. And if we do that...
Sorry, actually, your time is done. We have to limit it to three minutes.
I'm going to extend his time.
Okay.
It'd be good to have that review and documentation tied down, because the Airport Land Use Commission is very concerned about really protecting the airport, and so like the commercial area or the industrial area south of Ramon is infill, but you almost, you have to go through them, and then they have to review it, and if they don't like it, then you have to get it override by the city council. Where if the whole document could be reviewed and brought to an agreeable solution, I think that would help. There's a couple of policies, CR 113 and 114, that require street dedications before approval of a project. It's not a reality. The, a couple of examples on the FAR, we worked on a project that required umbelstone parking. It met the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance allows, in fact, the zoning ordinance in all the industrial areas allows an FAR of, you know, .6 to 1.2, but the overall aggregate development of industrial in the city is .23, so it's well under the .5. And that doesn't hurt the overall city. The other one is Section 14, and I don't know, maybe this has been discussed, Section 14 has some FARs of 1.0 instead of the .35 that the FAR for retail talks about in the general plan. I don't know how that's being, you know, pulled together. And there's, you know, some little details. One comment that the 10-year storm was between the property lines and drainage considerations. The 10-year storm is held between the curbs, and the 100-year storm is held between the right-of-way, at least that's the old thing. Maybe Chris has updated that on me, I don't know. Anyway, I think they've done a good job. I'm looking forward to it, but I'd like a little more time to get into some of these little details, because I'd like to have the, you know, the city and the tribe thing fleshed out just a little bit more nicely. It says that we still have the stigma of the checkerboard, and that's, you know, in the last 60, 70 years has almost disappeared. So you really don't see that. So, and there's not an inequity from side to side, from Indian to fee, because, you know, it's all come through here, and the tribes all agreed to that kind of a relationship. So, you know, we basically gave them a blueprint of how to do their land, and it's doing well, and Palm Springs is doing well. And I thank you for your service, Chris. Thank you. And how's Woody doing? Good, good. Say hi from Marvin. Thank you very much.
I'm going to take a break. We'll come back at 7:30. And I think what I would like to do, and I'd see if this works for my commission, is go back to the circulation element where we may have comments. And then we've gotten a set of new comments that I would actually like staff to look at and bring it back to us with recommendations. Those were from Mr. Ruse and also from Mr. Lucker and the comments that he gave to us, which cover both the land use element and the circulation element. Mr. Ruse, is to...
Just to clarify, the longer version, the Lucker comments were submitted Monday or Tuesday, right?
But our consultant hasn't seen them till now, and I'm seeing them for the first time now.
Well, if he's, I believe Mr. Lucker showed in strikeout and underline, or he showed in red what the changes were, and there's only one page, unless I'm reading it wrong. In this five-page document, there's only one small paragraph of red. That's not going to take much time to review.
Sorry, there are several other additions that's not showing on here. Yeah, not everything is in red.
Oh.
Yeah.
He fooled me by changing the color.
Yeah, when I looked at it, I didn't think it was just the red items either. The only reason it concerns a significant area of the city, and I would like these looked at before we submit this to city council. at before we submit this to City Council. But I would like to go back over our comments on the circulation element, the EIR and the safety element, starting with the circulation element. Do people have specific comments they want to make on the circulation element? And Commissioner Rotman, you had a street that you wanted to identify.
Right, I had talked about the redesignation of Racket Club Road west of Palm Canyon, from a collector street to a local.
What I would probably recommend, because I hear you that there's a parallel process happening out with our engineering department, right, is if the commission wanted, so chose, they could direct us to coordinate with the engineering department to see if that change was feasible at this time. Alternatively, we would reevaluate, if the engineering department weren't ready, let's say, to make that determination now, they could, alternatively, we could commit to returning at such time that that process finishes and address the designation at that time. So perhaps sort of a two-pronged recommendation, David, I don't know.
Yeah, and I will say that we did, because we did get a comment letter about that specifically, we did review it with the city engineer. His preference is generally not to reduce the, or reclassify the street, because it would limit their potential if they did need to increase the width of the street at a future point. But again, as Director has mentioned, if the commission wishes for us to study that further, we're certainly happy to continue looking at that further.
I will say that I've seen some of the preliminary work that's coming forth on that street, on the traffic calming, and so far, the widest their suggestion is 52 feet, and a local street has a max of 60. So, you know, that's not to say that's final, I understand this is early in the process, but right now, where we're at, we're certainly below the maximum for a local street.
My memory is that this has been a problem for years.
It has.
And it's something that should be addressed, and if it can be addressed by making it a local street, that might be very helpful for that neighborhood. It's, that street's only going up, it's only going, it's going up to one undeveloped subdivision, right, where about 10% of the houses are developed right now.
Yeah.
And you probably won't have that kind of traffic on that street. So I would, I would like to see a recommendation, a recommendation on that to go forward that way.
Thank you, Chair.
And I will say that there's also policies that allow neighborhoods to do traffic calming measures, such as it sounds like is being done here, that don't necessitate a downgrade of the street classification.
I don't think the traffic calming on that street has worked. So I don't think that's an acceptable alternate.
Well, I think, although it seems like Mr. Newell's point is it doesn't need to necessarily have a local designation in order to have traffic calming on it. Not speaking to whether the traffic calming that's there, or that's been proposed has worked or not, it has nothing to do with that. I'm just, and I'm just looking at what, what streets feed into Racket Club, and there's quite a number of streets that feed into Racket Club, and so, given the comparison to other parts of the city, there are not areas as large as this that don't have a collector sort of connected to them. So there's a lot of streets that are feeding into Racket Club. And so, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems like it makes sense that that would be considered a collector, because it is collecting lots of traffic from, you know, all those side streets.
They are one-block streets.
Yeah.
And they have, there's other, there are other streets that connect down to Palm Canyon.
You've got Via Olivera, you've got Vista Chino, you know, there's other options, and even on the north side of Racket Club, there's other streets that connect to Palm Canyon. So it's not necessarily off funneling to Racket Club.
I'm just, I'm looking at Vista Los Palmas neighborhood, for instance, and there is a collector that runs through Vista Los Palmas, and those are very localized streets, even though one of those streets is designated as a collector, so I don't know that. I'm just concerned not knowing what the downside of downgrading it to a local might be, and as long as the city has looked at all those options, it's, I don't have any personal stake in this, it's, it's just my concern is that, that being a collector seems very consistent with other areas that have similar local streets feeding into it, including in Deepwell, Vista Los Palmas, even in, well, Bellardo's not really a similar example. So that would be my only comment, I want to make sure we're not subverting some potential issue.
Director Hadwin, your, your recommendation at this point?
Because we had already consulted the city engineer on this, I'm a little bit loath to take a completely affirmative position, one way or another, on it, but I do think what could happen is to direct us to have that conversation again with two outcomes, change the designation when it goes to City Council, or return at such time that the work that's underway concludes, and we have a better handle on what the traffic calming measure is being proposed for Racket Club, as well as the impact on the surrounding streets, as Commissioner Miller is referring to, our better known, and we can make a better determination. I think I'd probably want to defer to the city engineer on some level, however you want to recommend that.
Okay.
And, and allow that process to conclude, because I'm just not sure, based on where it is in process now, that we know enough to conclusively make a determination.
And the other street we had a request on was Mesquite Avenue, between Compadre and Elsiello Road, to change that to a collector street rather than a secondary feral fair.
I don't even see Mesquite on the, Mesquite is not on the circulation between Compadre and Elsiello.
No, that's been removed.
So that comment doesn't even make sense, unless the commenter means between feral and Compadre, there's a red line, Mesquite.
Yeah, it actually, in the 2007 plan, it did continue through, and I think we had received this comment previously, and because of the state of the property, and at the time, the unknown of the development moving forward, we determined to remove it, because it wasn't thought that that would ever be constructed or continue through. So I think probably two options, one, leave it off, or two, add it backed in and continue it through as, in the way that's recommended. And I don't, I don't know that we have a position, but it could, the direction could it be?
Well, I think if, if a development at Bella Greens goes forward, and there's a lot that has to happen before that goes, that would go forward, then the road connection can be made at that time, we don't have to, we're not precluding that by not putting it on here in the circulation plan.
I think I would agree with you, then.
I think leave it off, because it's not.
Right. In a world in which development occurs, you could see that being continued through, I don't know that we know that information today, so I think we defer to your judgment on that.
And we don't know when and if Bella Greens is going to be developed. Circulation comments, concerns to take to staff? I have a list of them, but I don't know if you guys do. Okay. The airport, and it's page three and four, and four, three, and four thirty-nine, the airport's going through a significant upgrade, does the document, the way it is right now, encompass that upgrade?
It reflects the 2015 update that was done, let me see if we do have it for the current update that's planned.
Because they're going through one right now.
Yeah, there are policies, I believe, in here, in the land use section, that provide direction on coordination and updating the land use master plan. I'm going to try to find that.
So on page four thirty-nine, we do state that the city is currently undergoing an update to the airport master plan for the Palm Springs International Airport, that states initial findings are that the airport is expected to double in airport use, increasing from approximately 3 million annual passengers to twenty, to a 2045 forecast of 6.5 million annual passengers. So it does recognize that we are currently going through that update.
And it doesn't, it doesn't make any changes, that update doesn't make any changes to the circulation? We don't know yet.
The airports, yeah, we wouldn't have that level of detail yet.
And then, this general comment, one is bus shelters, I think it's P seventeen. There was a comment sent in by then-City Consular Woods to us that we were, oh, sometimes requiring developers to do attractive bus shelters, that when the bus company changed the routes, the shelters sat there empty, and that we shouldn't, we shouldn't put, and I think all of our language includes attractive, but that we shouldn't be requiring developers to put in bus shelters that may later get moved, but that we should be working that through with the bus company, that they put the shelters in. And I'm wondering if that comment got into this document.
No, the current policies were a continuation of prior general plan policies, and that was to create attractive bus shelters, that would be reflective of the new development on the site adjacent to it.
I think there may be a problem with that, so that's, that's what I'm raising, is that we have this current policy, but we may end up with some unused shelters left over when the bus company makes changes.
The challenge has been that the transit agency has a very formulaic approach to bus shelters, and so if we don't have policy in here that lets us work with developers to have some control over design, the bus shelters that we would get are not necessarily the ones that we would want. So we have been talking about this issue for a number of years outside of this process, and it's been slow-moving, I will say, in terms of getting the attention of our other partner in that conversation to talk about how to manage that. So I think we like the policy, in that it allows us to have a little bit of say and involvement in the process of what bus shelters look like. I hear the concern that if we're making them mirror the development next to it, and then it moves or something, maybe that's a little mismatched, is that essentially what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
So perhaps, you know, I don't think there's anything in the policy explicitly that says it has to.
I think it uses the word attractive.
It's not a requirement. I think if there's an operational practice that we've had in the past, where we have said, okay, you're, you're building this style of development here, and the bus shelter needs to look like it, this policy is not written to do that, that was an operational thing that we were doing as a matter of implementation.
Okay, so we're not, we're not requiring it by putting the word attractive in there.
Correct. I, I think I would like the language as is, but we need to work on the operational side of things to make sure that we're accounting for the scenarios that you and former council member Woods have raised.
And then I, some of my concerns regard pedestrians, where this is very, this document is very light on pedestrian issues and pedestrian walkways. CR seventy-five talks about having appropriate pedestrian facilities in new developments, and that's just, I know we don't end up requiring sidewalks in new developments, but we have a general plan that seems to indicate we should be doing that. I think it might be seven point five. And so I'm, I'm wondering, I don't, I like this, but we don't, it doesn't seem to me that we implement it.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
That particular policy, I like it, but it doesn't seem like we're implementing it.
And we were just discussing that, and I believe that more recent developments, as they're moving forward, we are, sort of as a matter of practice, requiring those facilities now, I think what you're seeing is, I want to call them historic, they're not so in the distant past, and many of them are still being constructed, and I think that's what you're reacting to, where we're not seeing sidewalks. Some of those are historic approvals, where we historically have not required it, as you're saying.
Yeah, even on surround roads, we don't have sidewalks.
Right, but I believe this policy helps encourage us to do so moving forward.
Okay, I don't want to change it, I just wanted to know what we were doing with it. And then, page twenty-nine, page twenty-nine, and it's a shade issue. And it's IMCR seven point five, provide shade on sidewalks, particularly downtown, to walk, to make walking more appealing in the summer months. Do we need the words particularly downtown?
It, I think it just emphasizes the need in that location, it doesn't require that it only be downtown, but it's.
It, it seems to say, don't do it anyplace but downtown. I mean, because we don't emphasize shade.
But I read it as just pointing out that is a particular location that needs attention, doesn't.
Yeah, I think the intent is to recognize that that is where we see the highest congregation of people and pedestrian activity, and so it's, it's important, city, I mean, we can finesse the language certainly, but.
I was going to say that seven point, so when you see what it's responding to, it's CR seven point two, which is actually specific to downtown, this policy.
So it is specific to downtown, so then we don't have a shade policy.
No, no, sorry, if you go one page up, CR seven point two provides a policy specific to the downtown area, and then seven point five, which you were referencing, is a broader citywide policy. So I think the intention was we have a downtown-specific policy, and then we have a citywide policy where we're emphasizing the need downtown, but also encouraging it citywide, if you wanted us to finesse the language, I think we could take a look at it.
If you could take a look at it.
To clarify that it's important citywide, especially where people congregate, including the downtown, something like that.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, there are places people congregate that, that aren't the downtown, that need shade. And then there was, in the, there was a provision to underground utilities, but there were no, and I don't know if I wrote down where it was, but it had no implementation, it didn't say, long, you know, going for a long time, or, there was nothing beyond underground utilities, there's no action or responsible department timing. And I don't know if that's because we're generally not requiring undergrounding of utilities anymore. utilities anymore?
Give us one moment.
You're on the safety element?
No, I'm, I'm in, it was in the circulation element. But I'm sorry, I didn't write down.
There was one. Ten point three, CR. So we are requiring, as a condition of improvement, for new development, the undergrounding of utilities, so that is something that we are doing as a matter of practice, I think. It's an ordinance, so that is a requirement already. So it, it is, it is included in the implementation documents that would flow from this.
I knew it was in the implementation, I just didn't see it as the responsibility of any department or any timeline attached to it.
It's, for new development, it is something that is done as a matter of practice for all new development, and the condition comes from our engineering department.
I think that covers my concerns on the circulation element. Oh, the other thing is the executive summary and the entire plan, the, the survey of our roads, the draft transportation impact analysis. What is that being used for? Because it says that some of our roads are going to be impacted. They're going to operate below loss standard, and it's Highway one eleven Sunrise, Jean Autry, Ramone, and East Palm Canyon. So I'm just, I was wondering, it's part of this, I was wondering how it gets used?
Reference the page, do you know the page number on that?
The page number is page number one on the executive summary. And it was listing the intersect, the roads that are going to be below law standards and the intersections that would.
Yeah, we, we can. I, I think, and I also, let me answer kind of generally, and then I can maybe bring in our, our team member, Delia Vaj, who, from Farr and Peers, who helped produce that particular study. But I think because level of service is no longer used for environmental evaluation, really, this is a kind of technical study that helps to inform the city, and particularly the, you know, the city engineer, about prospects for, for future roadway conditions, and, and I assume potentially be able to evaluate projects that may come before the city in the future as to how they might fit in with that overall context, and whether, on that basis, improvements may be warranted associated with, with development projects that come through, that, and, and, and can help to inform those project reviews and negotiations with applicants, but.
But it has no impact on the, the general plan update?
Correct.
It's an informative study that.
Correct.
That Chris will work with in the future. Okay, so I, because I didn't know how that fit in, but it, I didn't know if there was any implementation that was going to be required with this.
Yeah, I think it can help, again, help to inform strategic decisions about capital improvement projects, and, and provide that, that framework and foundation for evaluating application, project applications as they come through.
So on the circulation element, seeing no other comments, no other concerns, we decided on both roads that we would work with the engine, engineers as opposed to make a recommendation, or, I'm one of them, deal with it when it comes through as a project, and the other is to continue to work with the city engineers. There were no, oh, there were no specific changes, except possibly the one change to the, the shades, the shading of sidewalks, if the commissioners agree with me that we want that to be more general, so that it covers more areas of the city than just the downtown. And then we have the letters that we got that we haven't evaluated. Any comments on the safety element? And on the EIR, I'm assuming people would be, we're going to, we're going to basically approve the addendum.
Can I make a, just a point of clarification?
Yeah.
On the letter from Mr. Lucker. We have received this previously, and it was distributed, I want to say, two years ago, when the last time the planning commission reviewed this. So I, I didn't want there to be a misconception that this, these comments had not been evaluated or considered by our team. I think that some of them are better captured in the zoning code, and some of them we had determined not to move forward with at this point, based on conversations with the steering committee, with the commission of the city council.
Then we may get through this tonight.
Sorry?
Then we may get through this tonight.
And I, I just was realizing that, looking through emails to try and print it for you all.
And I would just add that we did, as Director Hadwin has mentioned, take into consideration some of these comments. So for example, on page three, where he talks about the overlay areas, so he identifies the energy overlay, in the two thousand seven general plan, that was the wind overlay. So we did take that, that comment into consideration, and that is part of the changes that were included. I think when we evaluated this with our consultant team, some of these comments are, are pretty specific, which might not otherwise commonly be in the general plan. And so I think for those reasons, not all of them were included. So that's kind of where it landed. And I, I can't say for sure, though, that we haven't looked at every single change in here since the, since Monday, to see if it was the same exact comments as we received before, but that's my recollection of how we addressed Mr. Lucker's comments.
Okay, do you have, so we have one, one change in the circulation element. We had some changes in the land use element, adding the one parcel that had been, we'd had a general plan change. And do you have notes on the other things that we said we would do?
I can try to run through what I recorded, and, and we can compare.
Yeah, I'll get it from the tape.
So I'll read what I have, and Anita, you can fill in any blanks that I missed, or the team collectively. So I had changing the designation of that Alejo and Commercial Drive parcel that was missed, that had been changed previously. We decided not to recommend altering the designation of Bel Air Greens. We, I believe, for discussion by the commission, consideration of changing the designation of the United Methodist Church site from medium-density residential to high-density residential. You had talked about under land use fourteen point one, confirming, we decided, or you had discussed potentially leaving that policy as-is, in case Oswett was not in control of everything in that area, but that we could clarify which portions of the Palm Hills were owned by Oswett.
Right.
Versus what are private, so we can, we can add in that clarification. We had discussed a recommendation regarding Boulders and Crescendo, to further evaluate altering the designation of that property to open space through a future zoning process to look at offsetting that density by upzoning other sites, or including it in College of the Desert, for example, as a possibility. We had talked about finding a way to denote areas like Boulders and Crescendo and the Chino Cone on a map, just to identify some of the areas that are referenced throughout the plan that people might not be able to easily locate, ensuring that our glossary of terms and definitions is comprehensive, and looking at the references that are made specifically to Desert Regional, to ensure that we are general enough to account what may be in the future for them. That's what I have.
I think that covers it. Does anybody?
Just to, if I could ask a clarifying question. On the United Methodist Church request, they had mentioned it's at the south end of their property. Is that going to be abutting that existing high-density that's down there, if you look at that? Okay, so it wouldn't be a distinct, it'd be a continuation of the height? Okay, good.
So, and approving, so I think we, and no changes to the, to the safety element.
Not that I heard.
Okay. Are there any concerns with any of those items? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution of the planning commission to approve the addendum previously certified environmental impact report to the twenty, two zero zero, two thousand seven general plan for amendment to the land use, circulation, and safety elements, and adopt the twenty forty general plan with amendments to the administration section, land use element, circulation element, and safety element, including the comments that were provided to the planning director tonight.
I'll second that.
Can you call the role, please? Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Chair Wermick.
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Commissioner Morel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving right along into.
Yes, yeah, let's take a moment and congratulate everyone who's worked on this. And what a wonderful last item for David. And thank you to Commissioner Baker and Chair Wermick for your participation on the general plan steering committee over the years and helping shape this plan. And thank you to all of you for your deliberation. And to our consulting team, and everyone who's joined online as well, for all of their very hard work.
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry that we don't see all of you.
And if I might just make a special tribute to Lynn Calladine, who.
Yes.
Was very deeply involved and passionately involved in crafting this plan. As a member of the steering committee, I know had a long history with this body, and now, I, I think we all feel this is a tribute to his memory and his work.
Can we say that when it goes to city council?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for the reminder and for the, the kind words, and we will absolutely make sure to give that shout-out when it goes to council.
Okay, planning commission reports, requests, and comments. You're all very quiet. Okay, planning directors report.
Thank you very much for a really productive meeting and for slogging through that with us. I know it was a big task, and I appreciate the time that you all spent on your summer vacation, reading through these documents, and, and coming with very thoughtful feedback and direction. This has been covered, but I, I don't know that I can say it enough, or actually even acknowledge it, to be honest, but we do really thank David for nineteen years of service, and all of his hard work and dedication to the city. You're seeing just one small part of that tonight, yes, thank you. On a personal note, my transition into this new role, coming from a different state, a different jurisdiction, a different planning background, two years ago, just over two years ago now, was made so much more smooth by David's support, dedication, knowledge, and just, you know, brilliance, and so, sorry? And professionalism, absolutely. And so I'm, I'm very grateful to him that he gave me two years before he moved on to, to greener pastures, and so wishing him all the very best, so, thank you. Onto not-so-fun news, we will have an appeal of the Prescott Preserve decision tomorrow night, so, you know.
Oh, it's on?
That has been, sorry?
It's on, it was not supposed to be on.
It is on tomorrow night, and so we received two appeals, one from the homeowners adjacent, and one from the Desert Chapel, who are also adjacent property owners, who raised a number of concerns with the process, with the outstanding lawsuit, with some, you know, disagreements over property rights and property ownership. So all of that will be discussed tomorrow night with the city council. This, of course, has been a very contentious project for a number of years, so we will see how the council proceeds with that. But that will be tomorrow night, and I'm sure it will be a long and, and fruitful hearing. And other than that, the fifteen-unit apartments that you all approved at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago went to the Architecture Review Committee earlier last week. I think that they raised some very good points about the architecture, and so I think there were just a couple outstanding items that the applicant wanted a little bit more time to think through, so, so that's gone back for some, some changes, and we expect that will come back to them shortly. That's it, that's it for me. Yeah. Any questions?
One, were we going to have, is it just a, a meeting with the Architectural Review Committee now that they've.
Yes.
They're functional, and has that been set up?
It's not been set up, thank you for the reminder. So we sat several new members at our Architecture Review Committee last week for their first meeting. So I think now that we're through, you know, all of that process of onboarding and getting them set up on their iPads, and working through some of the technical challenges that some of you are still experiencing, we will now turn our attention to having the meeting that we had discussed, just to kind of set goals and expectations with the planning commission. So we will work on doing that, thank you for the reminder. Yep, and I should also mention, sorry, just on that, with such a new council, new Architectural Review Committee, and so many new members, we do have new leadership. Lance O'Donnell, who had returned to the committee earlier this year, is the chair, and Jackie Thomas, who joined the committee earlier this year, is the vice chair, so new leadership there as well. Well, new and returning leadership. Lance has been around a bit.
He was chair before, wasn't he?
I think he was chair a number of years ago.
Just on, on the A R C, I think you had committed to getting us a revised list, or a list of the meetings that we're supposed to be attending, because I don't seem to have that, so I don't know if the others, that's, you know, the meetings where we're assigned to go and answer any questions of.
I wish I could say it got lost in your inbox, but I think it's lost in my outbox, so. Yes.
Maybe you should assign that to David before he leaves.
Do I have a second? Yeah, that's it for me.
Is he making you work tomorrow? Oh, no.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a little surprise for him in the afternoon, but he's actually going to present the Prescott appeal as his last.
Well, with that, welcome back, everybody, from their summer vacations, and we will adjourn until Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, at five thirty.